I don't know how this is gonna work with this. I don't know. I know we have somebody here to talk about roosters. I don't know, maybe, I don't know. I hope we'll find out. I may need some help because it's really hard without my glasses to read more so than before. Because I mean, I can see some of the things.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Fairview City Council for June 5th. Welcome everyone. And would you all rise while I lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good, will the clerk please call the rule?
Counselor Prom?
Here.
Counselor Creemire?
Here.
Counselor Owen?
Here.
Counselor Barton Mullins?
Here.
Counselor Quimby?
Here.
Counselor Arnold?
Here.
Mayor Weatherby?
Here.
The next item is a consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent.
Second. It has been moved by, and seconded. Do all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, it is passed. Moving right along, the next item is citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items. We have a couple people here. You have to excuse me, I just had cataracts out and I do not see well yet up close. The first person is Mr. Jeff Anderson. Mr. Anderson, if you would come up here, please, and give your full name and your address.
Jeff Anderson, 1465 Northeast Village Street. And Mr. Mayor, I just want you to know that I'm looking splendid tonight. I have a three-piece suit on, I dressed up, and I'm looking sharp for you.
I believe it.
I know there's nothing more you'd like to discuss or hear about than the sidewalks, but here I am for the three minutes to talk to you about that. My concern is, with the sidewalk conversation, is that we can separate out Village Street as it is to the rest of Fairview. To compare the Village Street situation to the rest of the city is kind of, it's not apples to apples, it's more like grape to a watermelon. We have massive failures on Village. I emailed everyone out and I know we've got it, but we basically have a failure every 4.9 feet on Village and the rest of the Village sampled out at 176. So it's about 60 times greater problem on Village Street. You know, like I said, we're experiencing failure rate 40 to 60 times that of the rest of Fairview. The numbers are accurate, they illustrate the situation we're facing. And all I ask is that you keep in mind these numbers and the reason for the Village Street situation when you look to find a remedy to this. The situation on Village is due to the wrong tree, the wrong compaction. It's just a toxic mess of, you know, good intention and wrong implementation. So, you know, we as Village Street owners are suffering adversely from that. I think that we, you know, deserve a quick and correct remedy. So I appreciate your attention, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and a nice tie, by the way.
Thank you.
And we did talk about that in the workshop, and we have a subcommittee with Counselor Prom who is chairing that, and I am sympathetic to the issue and the needs. The next person we have is Mr. Bruce Brown. Am I correct? Burns? Burns, okay, well, I, first initial was right, I got the rest wrong.
Very good, Bruce, actually. I was saying, change of my name to Bruce. My name is, oh, excuse me. My name is Bruce Burns. I live at 705 Main Street, Fairview, Oregon. I'm here about the rooster ordinance. I've got everybody a copy. I'm just gonna read this, and it's the same thing you have there, so this'll be quick. "I am sure that Multnomah County is not concerned with the sex of an animal when drafting an effective noise ordinance. As outlined in the Fairview City Ordinance, it is the intent on minimizing noise as a noise ordinance that roosters are excluded from neighborhoods. If you buy baby chicks from a feed store, there is a 20% chance that a few of them might turn out to be roosters. With this regard of second baby chicks, this is the best they can do. So until they are recognizable as roosters, there's little that can be done. This is normal for anyone who wishes to have homegrown organic eggs. As ordinance go, this one has a fatal flaw. While roosters do the majority of crowing, and the ordinance addresses that by eliminating all roosters, however, it does not address the fact that non-chicken razors are aware of, and that is that some hens will also crow. I was told when I visited Fairview City Hall that when a hen crows, and I had three crowing hens, if the neighbor complains, there is nothing the city will do about it, only if the crowing is done by a rooster. This does not make my neighbor happy with me, my chickens, or the city ordinance. I have an alternative to this. Since organics is up and coming trend and more people are turning to small gardening, I propose that in the interest of keeping up with the times, that a specially, specifically designed sound-resistant cage for those who wish to keep roosters for breeding, because you can't get baby chicks without them. To this end, I have designed and built a relatively soundproof prototype cage and has tested effectiveness with my remaining crowing hen, which means I got rid of the roosters. This is very effective for those who wish to keep their crowing bird. This has also appeased my neighbor, who seems quite happy, and has also is proof that it does work. Simply put, I propose an amendment to the Fairview City Rooster Ordinance that for those who are willing to go to expense and trouble to construct a soundproof cage and retain a rooster based, obtain a rooster permit based on having built a sound diminishing confinement in which to sequester the noise ordinance violator, be it male or female. This will address the floor in the ordinance, the sleepless neighbors, and organic-minded egg producers. Hence, everyone is happy. Those who do not comply with the addendum can be addressed as before. That part of the ordinance need not change. You have resources that I have gleaned from the Internet about crowing hens and other counties that have done what they have done in order to address that. So, that's all I have. I'm sorry, did everyone? I apologize.
No problem, thank you very much, very eloquent. Anyone else I didn't get a notice sign? Thank you, I can't believe we such a big crowd out there. We're a good-looking bunch, but I didn't know we attracted that many here. All right, the next item on the agenda is the City Administrator Reports.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilors. I have just a few updates for you. Reminder to the citizens that the Fairview newsletter, Fairview Point, was in your utility bill this month, so please take a look at that. It's also available on the website as well. There's some, you know, good information in there, there's a listing of our current meetings. There's also a reminder that I-84 is gonna be under construction this summer, and I know a lot of our citizens commute or use I-84 quite frequently getting to Portland, so please be aware of that and access that information so you're not caught by surprise. And the other update I have is that the Consumer Confidence Report for our Water normally is billed out, mailed out as an individual report. This year, the state changed the mandate that we are able to deliver that electronically to each of our citizens, saving jurisdictions a significant amount of money in printing costs as well as in mailing. So, we have sent this yellow slip in the utility bills to all of our water customers. If they would like to get a hard copy, they just need to mark it and send it back to us or give us a call and we'll be happy to forward them a hard copy of the report. Otherwise, it is available online. So, wanted to make sure people were aware of that as well. And that is all I have for you this evening. Happy to entertain any questions.
See any likes?
As for directors, Chief Johnson is on vacation this week, Sergeant Kirby is here in his stead, so if you have questions in a police nature, he is available.
Counselor Barton Mullins?
Sergeant Kirby, I wanted to let you know that on Zalish, I can't even say it, Zalish Pond Trail, the underpass is just covered in graffiti, both sides. Thank you.
And Deputy Finance Director Lisa Folger is here as well, however, she does not have a report this evening, but available if you have questions for her. Any questions?
Counselor Prom?
I do have a question for, or a comment for Allen Berry. I noticed that at the Crossroads Park, the city has put up a sign notifying people that of the ordinance, city ordinance, there's a $1,000 fine for not picking up your dog waste. And I would like to know if there's any actual enforcement of this, and if you could put more signs throughout the city in different parks. Yes? That would probably replace the red light camera funds, I would imagine.
Yeah, Allen, come on up.
And then Director Berry's here for his report as well.
It's a thousand dollars? Holy cow.
I'll send you a copy of the code. Good evening, Mayor Weatherby, members of council. Before we get totally gone, just a couple of updates. One of the things that you'll see this summer is the Depot Street Saw Project will go this summer, and also, once the funds come through, the Main Street sidewalk completion will go. I've got a couple, I tried to get our Parks Chairman here tonight, but I think he may still be on vacation, but the Parks Advisory Committee wanted us to present three concepts that they had to you. One was that they would like, and I know you're aware of these, an authorization to spend SDC funds on park improvements, and especially for the park improvements we talked about at Cleone. Another one was to prioritize the city parks and do individual master plans that would be coordinated into one master plan later on. And then last but not least, to change park hours of operations for all parks to be dawned till dusk, and we'll clarify that. I wrote this up, I know this is short notice, I'll pass this out so you can see it, and perhaps if you've got any questions, we can talk about it later. I'll just give you. And then before, you know, one, I don't think, we didn't do it in the work session, but just, I know you all know, but Lindsay Nesbit took on a new role, she's going to take on a new role as a senior planner at Multnomah County. She's actually gone home now, but I just wanted to make sure that we, for the TV audience and of course for you to, just to say, you know, from the department standpoint, to say, you know, thanks to her for all her good work, and she'll be missed, and of course, she's gone till Friday to change her mind, I guess, but we wish her all the best. Going into our main topic for tonight, it's Park Cleone. And we've, what we, we were asked to do a survey, so just to let you know, we did, we did 321 mailers, direct mailers hung on doors in Old Town, and we also put the survey on the website. Out of 321 surveys, we actually, we got 27 responses, but just to let you know in general what we got, the use of the park seems to be evenly distributed throughout the day. Most of the use is obviously at weekends, and I think we would understand that. They, in terms of the surveys, the playground equipment appears to be the amenity that's most desired by the Old Town community. Just to give you an idea, things, other things that were brought up on this survey were that restrooms, porta-potties perhaps, tetherball suggested, wheelchair accessibility, all age group activities was raised, and then a concern that anything we do down there would be subject to vandalism, because there was some concern with transient camps. But on the same comment, they said, "We think this park is awesome." Dog walking in an off-leash dog park. Now, associated with the survey, we didn't stop there.
Ladies and gentlemen?
So I was really fortunate to go down to Fairview Elementary. So you don't have to stand up. I went down to Fairview Elementary, and met the third, fourth, and fifth grade classes, and these five are representative, you know. These five people are representing those classes. Now, these five are great, but they're all, all three great, fantastic. The ideas that they had were tremendous. And I mean, and they're gonna share some of the ideas with you, and then we can talk a bit further. They're very ready to answer any questions. One thing that I promised them though, is that they wanted a team photograph of the city council up there, so I think you're up here. So, you wanna?
Introductions first.
Okay, last one. So we've got Deputy Director Sophie Schrader, Deputy Director London Pettis, Deputy Director Brenna Garrison, Deputy Director Travis Kelly, and Deputy Director Marshall Lee. She's in charge.
Hello, and my name is Sophia Schrader, and this is what I have to say about Park Cleone. Some classes chose the play structure with the tarps. You know, kids with broken arms and kids in wheelchairs can't go and play on play structures. Well, the play structure with the tarps can, because it, because it has a handicap access in the play structure. This new play structure can be something that all kids will be able to enjoy. Thanks for your time.
Hello, hi, my name is London Pettis, and I go to Fairview Elementary School, and I am in the third grade. I just did very, very public works, visited our school the other day. He showed us four different play structures and wanted our feedback. He showed us four different play structures. I was really excited when I heard that a play structure was going in at Cleone Park because I live right next door with my grandma, grandpa, aunt, brother, and dad. Cleone Park has history for our family. The third grade class really liked one of the play structures because it had a lot of new things to play on. The play structure would help us, keep us healthy and happy. The play structure would help families in Fairview feel welcome to the park to play and have family dip tanks. The structure is safer than the last one we had. You see, the old structure was what my dad played on when he was a child. He told me that when he went to Fairview Elementary, they got to plant trees at Cleone Park when it first developed. So I think Cleone Park gives us much history, but also for it being part of its future. And Cleone Park is great and always has been, but it needs more for the new children in the neighborhoods where it can still be a safer, cool place to go. Thank you.
My name is Brenna Garrison. I am in fifth grade at Fairview Elementary, and I am 10 years old. I live about 10 blocks away from Cleone Park. I have two reasons why we need a new play structure. One reason is that the Fairview kids need a new play structure because kids eight and up seem to spend more time indoors watching TV and playing computer games instead of going outside and playing on the park. If we get a new play structure, kids will visit the park more often and embrace nature. One more reason is that Fairview is so small, we have very few fun parks, so kids don't enjoy the park's tiny structures. But the structure Cleone Park might get could be a huge impact. The bigger it is, the more people will like it, and the structures are amazing and gigantic, so they will attract more visitors. In conclusion, those are the reasons why I should leave, whoa, sorry. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Travis Kelly. I think Park Cleone is, I think the new equipment in Park Cleone is good because kids will turn off the TV and video games and get more exercise by going outside. Kids will spend more time with their family and friends. This equipment also has handicap access. Kids that are handicapped can play on it too, and that is why I think it's good.
Hi, my name is Ashley, and I go to Fairview. Today I'm going to tell you about a park. Some people live right next to Park Cleone. Park Cleone used to be an awesome park, but now it's just a field with swings. The park used to have tires to play on, but they're too old and starting to break down. This could hurt the children playing on it. This new play structure is awesome. Even handicap people can go on it. Some people at Fairview Elementary wanted a big slide on the play structure. We need a play structure at Park Cleone because kids play on video games and watch TV all the time. Having this play structure will help these kids get up and go to the park. I hope you like my opinion about the play structure.
Wow, that's great, I'm impressed. And when this opens, they should be the first to play on it, shouldn't they?
Normally just begun. Just to elaborate, so they, you know what they, what they were looking at, we actually, we presented, and we looked at four versions of the, of the park, different sets of equipment, and then, and then the classes, we discussed them individually, and then, of course, the fire directors and the principal, we met the other natures to discuss it. And there's some really great questions that they've all touched on a little bit, but the one, the, the, the structure that they really focused on was this one, and, and the impressive, and I can't remember exactly who it was, it was when they were looking at, we thought the four would be popular, but when they saw this one, the comment was, well, we think more age groups could play, and also kids that are in wheelchairs could get on it. If we did a wheelchair accessible structure in Cleone, it would be one of the only ones acting around. So that's just it. So, we'd like to look at it. The two that they focused on has been the one and two, check correctly if I get this wrong, that we basically thought, the, this blue one was number one, and then the four was number two, right? We, they, one of the things that they thought about was that on the, on the blue one, perhaps, they'd like maybe one more higher slide. And so, what we would like to do is to, is to, is to go back and look at some options, and, and with your approval for us to, to come up with a plan, a cost, and to get this thing going. We also touched base on maybe we want to make it a community install, and we'll research that with the public works staff, and, and the kids and their parents and families. And so, if you're going, like I said, if you're going to questions, these are the guys that we've asked, and they really do quite a great job.
Yeah, well, I think that's just the right group, and I think, I'm very impressed with their first choice. My youngest son is handicapped, and I know he would enjoy something like that. So it's great, and so they're gonna get to be around and help us out for a while. That's excellent. Ah, yes, Counselor, oh.
Well, I just wanted to say Deputy Ashley, Travis, Brianna, London, and Sophia, thank you all very much for being so brave and sharing with us your opinions today, because your opinions really do make a big difference. At our last meeting, when we got together, we passed a resolution called Heal, Healthy Eating and Active Living. And what you're talking about with kids being inactive and watching more TV and not being as healthy as they can be, well, I'm proud to say that this city cares about that, and so we're very excited to have you guys come to us and tell us what's important and what would make you want to be outside and active. So thank you all very much for being here.
And Counselor Owen?
Well, yeah, thank you very much for coming tonight. It's a great presentation that you all did. I was just wondering, so the, the number one choice here is the one with, looks like, maybe like a blue canvas type structure. I know a lot of times up here, we all think we know a lot, but I'm not sure that we know a lot about play equipment. It's been a while. So I was just wondering if any of you deputy directors could maybe tell us a little bit about that selection, and maybe why that one would be a good one for Park Cleone? So, anyone wanna give it a shot and explain maybe what's so nice about this one, or what type of equipment it provides? Do you, Brianna?
Yeah.
Okay.
I especially like it because it's available for handicapped children. And so, because they have a disease or something terrible happens to them, they can't be able to play in those play structures. But with Park Cleone's probably new play structure, they can.
Okay, okay, good, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Allen, do you have an approximate cost for that particular structure?
One of the things with this particular structure that we talked about is the umbrella things really are not a good idea. You know, their fabric, it was really designed for Southern California-type climate. So one of the things I'd like us to be able to do is to go back, if you concur, and we will, we will do a modified design on maybe a compliant structure with hardtops rather than that. In terms of cost, and we've been talking about this, I can come back and tell you what we think we ought to spend on that based on the other, on the other work that we think we'd like to do in Cleone. But you tell us, quite frankly, if you, you tell us what you're willing to spend, we can take care of that, right?
I bet you could. So do you have a feel, I mean, assuming that these deputy directors probably want to play on this equipment sooner than later, I mean, if you think about, you know, trying to fast-track this in some way, when, when would you anticipate like an installation and them actually cutting the ribbon of something like this?
We have, we have, we've got a heat about this because we'll, if we get there, if you sign, if we meet either late this week or next week, and we start modifying this thing, we'll have some options. We'd get the, we'd come to you with the answer, with a proposal, next council meeting. And we would have it ready and ready to order that day, and it's, we're probably looking at three to five weeks, and then what we'd have to do is organize the community event to install it. do is organize the community event to install it. Obviously, I've got to go through all the permitting things that I've got to do, but I'm sure you'll delegate that to me, but we'll, that's, so I think midsummer we'd build the installment. I think the idea of doing a community install, playing on it's going to be really cool, but building it will be really, really cool. See? Right?
Thank you. Councillor Quimby.
First thing I want to talk about regarding this project is, is something that you touched on, Alan, with the, with the public installation of it. I helped participate quite a few years ago at Fairview Elementary when they put in their new playground equipment down there. And I think that it was a great event that really brought a really good sense of community to, to the students and the families that were there that, that partook in it, and it saved it, and it saved a tremendous amount of money also. So we got a lot bigger bang for our buck in what we could do by having, you know, the community put it together. So I think that's a great idea. And then the only other thing I have regarding this is, you know, the, these children and other children in our community, you know, they are going to be the biggest end user of this, so, so we really need to listen to them. I think it'd be great to, to have them meet with, with you again and actually, you know, have them, have them meet with, with, with the Parks Advisory Committee to help formulate a, a plan for this because I think these guys are going to think about a, a lot of really cool amenities that us adults aren't going to think about. And, and I think that would be a wonderful thing. So I applaud and commend you, you kids for coming tonight. Thank you.
They've got some great ideas for the rest of Park Cleon as well. They've already approached some of those subjects. They want some delta, delta, please.
Good. Councillor Prom.
I'd just like to reiterate a few things that have already been said. I think it's great that you guys, deputy directors, got to help out. You guys are really the real experts. You're going to be the end users for this. You have some great ideas, obviously. I appreciate you wanting to involve everybody, that more people can participate in the playground equipment. I think that's great. I think it's also a great idea to do the public install. I think that'll give everybody more sense of ownership and people will take care of the play structure and it's great. And you guys can talk to your kids someday about when you helped install playground equipment there.
Okay. Councillor Quimby.
Last fall, when I was campaigning, I had a gentleman stop me and say, what happened to the equipment that was in Park Cleon? And I said, gee, I don't know. I'm not on the Parks Committee meeting. I don't know what's going on, but let me find out. And when I was walking through that neighborhood, I had several other people talk to me about what happened to our playground equipment. And I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not, but the mayor made me the council liaison to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. And so the first thing I did was go after, probably stronger than my fellow councillors wanted to see, some playground equipment. So I've, I've been involved in this for the last five months. And we had one member who questioned the age group of the kids. So what we have this survey that we did ten years ago and eleven years ago. We had a master plan for the parks and we had a recreation master plan that included some pretty specific language for what we were going to do or what the citizens wanted in Park Cleon as money became available. And other projects got in the way, money came in slow, but it did build up, and we got involved with other parks and kind of forgot about Cleon. And so everybody thought, well, is this master plan still valid? And so I, for one, am just thrilled to see kids here that say, this is what we want. So I'm all for this, and I'm really pleased that you kids have come here. And I'd like to see you get involved with the Pratt Committee too because we do have a, a full master plan for the entire park. Right now, we just wanted to fast track getting some equipment replaced, but we want to spend the summer working on a full plan, and I'm thrilled that you want to be involved in that, and I'm going to be happy to see you attend a Pratt meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Barton Mullins.
Wow, in the seven years I've been sitting up here, I have never seen councillor Quimby get so emotional. But this has sort of been his baby, and he's been working really hard to get all of the kids' play equipment there as soon as he can. But I just, I don't, you know, I can't say anything more than has already been said tonight, other than thank you very much for coming. It was a very brave thing for you guys to do, to sit up here and to talk to us, but we appreciate it. And I don't think that this park could be as good as it was going to be without your input. So now that we have your input, it's really, really going to be perfect. And I want to thank all of you for thinking of the other children and not just yourself or what you want, but, you know, for the other handicapped children or people with special needs that would possibly be using the equipment too. You're all very, very bright and really appreciate you being here.
Great. See how popular you guys are? This is great. This is what she says, that you and the support of your families are doing a good job. Now, I saw a young woman up here helping out. Is that one of your staff people or your assistants? Or, no, okay. Maybe not. As a teacher?
Yeah.
A mom? Oh, even better than a teacher or mother.
Principal McLaughlin at Fairview Elementary is really awesome in all this.
Okay.
She's very supportive and wants to have a good relationship.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Carla Shosanya, and I'm the director of all of our elementary schools of our little school district. Andrea Watson is our communications director. We've got families and we also have teachers. But Principal McLaughlin wanted to be here. She's been working directly with Alan and her students, but her own daughter is receiving a very large scholarship. She's a senior in high school tonight, and that was why I came to support the effort and why we have some of our... If your parents are involved with this project, can you just raise your hand for a second? So these are all the people that, that are here to support our students, and we just really thank you for this opportunity.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Can we do a photograph?
Sure. Absolutely. Oh, councillor Quimby.
Alan as councillor liaison to the Park and Recreation Committee, I just, this caught me off guard. I just want to lodge a complaint that I wasn't giving a heads up. But this is, has been the most thrilling citizen input I think I've seen in thirteen years.
Can we have him come up here, Alan?
Yes, come on up.
Alan, can you lead him around the corner? Unless they come this way, Alan. And they never came back.
That's you, Andrea, right? Oh, I didn't recognize you. Okay. Come on up. Alan, what do you think of putting the placards up in front of them? Yeah, come on over.
Screw it on down, go in between. You got it?
Sure. All right, get up in here. Step up in here. Somebody up in here.
So help me with your hands. Brenna.
Love it. Stand by.
Oh, she's down.
Maybe stay here the rest of the night. Take the rest of the time off. Hey, you're on TV too, you know that.
Okay, one, two, three, smile.
Great. Great. Thank you. Do you guys just want to stay there for the rest of the meeting? Sure, thanks. You guys would get bored. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Good job. Maybe they could help us fix the sidewalk and street tree dilemma. Yeah, did a good job with this. Excellent. Just caught everybody by surprise. But a nice surprise, very nice.
All right, Mayor.
Anything else from Alan?
No.
Okay.
I had, I had one other thing for Alan.
Yeah, go ahead. Where did he, oh, wait, should we wait for him to get back in here?
Councillor Quimby had a question.
I had a quick question for you. At our last council meeting, you know, we had talked about, I brought up the possibility of us looking at doing an economic feasibility study or, you know, talking to different consulting firms about doing that. And I just wanted to touch base and find out, you know, what the status of that is, if we've contacted anybody as of yet, and if we have any, you know, dialogue going back and forth on, on that.
Yeah, what I did is I looked at the, the USS Ranger proposal and looked at that economic study, and that company was from like way back east. So what I did is Leland Associates, Dave Leland, had done a study for the East, the Connections Plan, and he'd also been here and talked about that riverfront at one point. So I actually talked to him. He was in central Mexico when I talked to him, he was on vacation. And we're meeting early next week and to see how, basically what I said to him is, should we be doing a study before you do the plan, or should you do the plan before you do the study, or should, should you do the study and the plan as you go? So we're going to get together, and he's willing to share, he's, he's got some examples of RFPs that he's put out. He's done a bunch of this stuff that he's willing to share with, in terms of approach. So I'll be meeting with him early next week.
Okay. Thank you. Now, who, you said you worked with the corridor study group?
Yeah, Leland was commissioned by Metro, I believe it was by, in fact, I know Travis is here somewhere, he can probably, yeah, he was Metro. He, he did the, the economic development approach to the corridor study, and he, it was like a ninety-three page proposal that he did. And he's done a lot of these things all over, and I know he, he seems to be a person that can at least pushes in the right direction. I think he, he can tell us what he thinks we need.
And did you say there was something else he worked on out here?
He came to the council, the work session and presented on, on the Ranger development once, maybe what, I can't remember exactly when. So you, you've seen this gentleman before.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mayor Committee reports, and councillor Prom.
I have nothing else tonight.
And councillor Quimby.
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
And councillor Owen.
Just one thing. We had a Police Safety Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, May the sixteenth, and one of the topics of discussion is, you know, how to fund an additional police officer. And within the budget that we have before us tonight, we have at the recommendation of the Budget Committee to approve the hiring of a fifteenth officer. But within the PSAC group, the Police Safety Advisory Committee, they are at least contemplating or wanting to have a discussion as to what it would take to fund a sixteenth officer. And so one of my assignments, and, and I've really kind of come up empty on this, and so I just bring this up, if anyone has any ideas, whether they be on the council, or someone out in the audience, or someone that's actually watching this this evening, if they have any ideas on, you know, a possible funding mechanism as it relates to hiring a sixteenth officer, if you could provide that information to either myself or Samantha Nelson, our city administrator. Our next meeting of the Public Safety Advisory Committee is June the twentieth, I believe, at five thirty PM. But some of the areas that they're already looking at or contemplating would be, you know, like what would a levy look like if they were to do something, or maybe some type of public safety fee that may be tied to like a utility billing type arrangement as far as ease the collectability. So any ideas that anybody has as it relates to a potential funding would benefit the, the work of the committee and maybe kind of give them a jumpstart on some of their work. And that's all I had this evening.
Thank you. Councillor Barton Mullins.
Just one thing. I have been on vacation the last couple of weeks and went to Orlando. And while I was there, I just happened to be able to meet the mayor of Disney World. The gentleman's just a character anyway. He's really fun, and I, I thought of our mayor and how much fun he would have in that position. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Did you get a key to the city?
No.
Oh, okay.
Just a picture.
All right. Councillor Quimby.
I don't have anything this evening.
And councillor Alan.
Um, yes, so this, earlier this week, the ASAC Committee had their meeting. And I understand that we have coming up the opportunity for us to talk about some of the, the concerns that the ASAC Committee had at our next meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, it was on the agenda.
Very good. And in essence, the, the group put together a mission statement. I don't have that here today. It's still kind of a work in progress, so that is making some progress. And we're also, the, the group is also working on collaborating with hopefully PSAC and with Officer...
Singh.
Singh?
Singh.
Singh on the National Night Out. The group was tasked with coming up with additional ideas that they had for community events, and there was a lot of discussion, but no, nothing distinct came out of it as of yet. But one thing that was good that we're talking about for the Veterans Day is to have not necessarily a parade potentially, but perhaps doing a honoring of some of our veterans or honoring our veterans in Fairview. And we were talking about ways in which we might be able to identify those folks. And possibly this organization, ASAC, being the sponsor organizer for that sort of community component of it. I think the other, I think that was pretty much it. Oh, and, oh, probably the other thing that's important to note is the group felt it was important for them to reach out to private organizations and offer their expertise and offer their help in any way that they can to develop a good private, private-public partnership. So I think that was a great idea. And I think that is it I have on that agenda item.
Thank you. Well, the only thing that I have is trying to organize a meeting of the other mayors out in East County with Sherri Craddock regarding this clean cities, clean air issue that Metro's pushing. Most of what they want in their model involves increased taxes or fees or ways to pay for this, which I think is an old, outmoded way of thinking, that is something easy for government to do is just put a tax on something to change behavior. And so we're hoping to, at least, the mayors I've talked to are hoping to be able to formulate some questions and concerns and ideas, something that she can carry back as our representative to the Metro Council. So, and that's about it. It's coming up on summer. Okay, the next presentations we have with us, Executive Director of the East Baltimore County Economic Alliance, Travis Stow. Welcome, Travis, and glad you could attend our meeting, and welcome again. Well, the only thing that I have is trying to organize a meeting of the other mayors out in East County with Sherri Craddock regarding this clean cities, clean air issue that Metro's pushing. Most of what they want in their model involves increased taxes or fees, or ways to pay for this, which I think is an old, outmoded way of thinking, that is something easy for government to do, is just put a tax on something to change behavior, and so we're hoping to, at least, the mayors I've talked to are hoping to be able to formulate some questions and concerns and ideas, something that she can carry back as our representative to the Metro Council, so, and that's about it, it's coming up on summer. Okay, the next presentations, we have with us Executive Director of the East Multnomah County Economic Alliance, Travis Stowall, welcome Travis, and glad you could attend our meeting, and welcome again.
Good evening. My name is Travis Stowall, Executive Director of East Metro Economic Alliance, and the only thing I regret this evening is not bringing kids with me, because it's difficult to follow the presentation that was just done in front of me, but I will do my best to actually make this interestingly, interesting enough that can keep your attention. This evening, I want to bring you up to speed on East Metro Economic Alliance, many of you have had the opportunity to attend some of the membership meetings and forums that we now call them, but I also want to kind of take you back a little bit, to start talking about what East Metro Economic Alliance is all about, kind of the focus and the work that we do. East Metro Economic Alliance started in about two thousand and three, and it started as a public-private partnership, and actually Mayor Weatherby is the only mayor that's actually still in the mayor role since East Metro Economic Alliance started, it was Mayor Chuck Becker, Mayor Tolliver, and I'm forgetting the former mayor of Wood Village.
Fuller.
Dave Fuller, yeah, Fuller, over in Wood Village, and the focus was, how do we, as the East Metro, begin to work together for economic development, and economic development advocacy? We noticed that across the region, we saw other areas that were developing quite nicely, you know, many times we talk about Westside, and the Westside Economic Alliance, Clackamas County Business Alliance started just before we did, about two or three years before we did, and we saw the things that were happening, the aggregate effects that they were having, and the positive effects they were having on their communities, in regards to investments from across the region going into their areas, and the four mayors got together again under Mayor Weatherby's leadership, and at that time Mayor Chuck Becker, they got together and said, we've got to operate in a different way. So in two thousand and three, they came together with a couple of, a couple of private industry business leaders, and the elected officials sat down at the table and began to talk about ways that we can work together for the common good. At that point in time, they began to see the benefits of it, began to expand that group, and two thousand and four, two thousand and five began to take dues, and as you can see in that second slide, the East Metro Economic Alliance membership dues chart from two thousand and four, it starts out somewhere just south of fifteen thousand dollars, goes on to two thousand and six where East Metro Economic Alliance was down around nine thousand, membership dwindled, and in two thousand, late two thousand and six, they asked if I would come on board and begin to work with East Metro, and in a sense, turn them around, begin to grow the organization. So I started in two thousand and six, and we can kind of see the growth from that point forward, and these are dues just from membership, and so what you can see here is the effect of being able to have an organization that now has a positive effect on the community, and businesses, and other entities are having the desire and the opportunity to invest in the things that are going on, and as you know, private industry and organizations in municipalities don't invest in things that aren't getting results, so as you can see there, up through two thousand and ten, close to thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars in revenues just from membership dues, and it's fascinating when you think about this, because generally when we have chambers of commerce, chambers of commerce are organizations that bring together small and medium-sized businesses for the most part, and they generally are generating business for each other, and so there's a, there's a benefit, and it's almost an instant benefit, I can go to a chamber meeting, introduce myself, and get business that afternoon. East Metro Economic Alliance doesn't, it's not structured in that way, it's an organization that is really looking at raising the water level so that all boats are rising with the tide, and we all benefit, not just in the short term, but in the long term, and so when you have businesses that are looking at a more of an altruistic approach to what's going on, it's something that's a fascinating thing when folks are investing this amount of time, effort, and money into an organization. The next slide, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, you can see the diminishing requests from the municipal partners. Back in two thousand and ten, EMI approached the municipal partners and said, we really see the benefit of some of the things that are going on, we need to expand that effort, we need to expand the organization to ensure that we can remain competitive with our counterparts across the region. Westside Economic Alliance pulls from roughly almost three hundred thousand population, we pull from about a hundred and thirty thousand, so a significant disadvantage in regards to the base of businesses and population that we pull from. Clackamas County pulls about the same that we do, just a little bit larger, and as you look at that list, most organizations have increasing needs for funding. As you look at this, from two thousand and ten to two thousand and thirteen, East Metro Economic Alliance's request has gone from forty-five thousand to twenty thousand.
Yeah, Travis, what about the membership dues growth for two thousand and eleven, twelve, thirteen, this chart here goes through two thousand and ten, I was just, is that actually showing some growth past ten?
That's an excellent question, I, it actually cut it off on the printer, and I didn't notice that. It goes out through two thousand and twelve, so two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve are actually, once you get to two thousand and twelve, you're just over forty thousand dollars, forty-five thousand dollars, and the year before that, we're just under forty thousand for two thousand and eleven, so there's, so you consistently see that climb up, so two thousand and twelve, revenues are just under forty-five thousand dollars.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah, it's, I can see now that it cut those last two years off. Excellent question. The next slide is called Business Plan Initiatives, and when EMI started, the board sat down and said, what are the, what are the grand initiatives that we want to guide this organization and guide this community in the long term, so not just that year-to-year action planning type stuff, but what are the long-term perspectives of what we're looking at, and so that's what kind of gives us that overall guidance. One of the key things that led off, and there are three key areas that we look at, transportation, land use, and education, as we launched the original EMI and the EMI Business Plan, in the transportation, one of the key things was two hundred and twenty-third Street, primarily north of Halsey, and that's, for me, that's something that's, I'm really passionate about because I'm a cyclist, and I really enjoy the ride from down to twenty-third all the way down to Marine Drive, and of course, now we've got that nice overpass just before we get to Sandy Boulevard, but beyond that, we still have the old railroad bridge, which needs to be fixed, and of course, we also have business members who clearly see the need, and I think we all see the need, and so the smiley faces are, and these are things, again, that were launched in two thousand and thirteen, and if I, if I gave you the full business plan, you'd be fascinated as to the progress that has been made, we've seen progress on two hundred and twenty-third, we've seen progress on the North-South Connector, we've seen progress on Sandy Boulevard, we've seen progress on the Troutdale Interchange, when we get to land use, shovel-ready sites, the East Metro actually contains the only tier-one site, which is shovel-ready within six months, that's over a hundred acres in the entire region. Spring water consolidation is something that we actually haven't begun a lot of work on, but there's some initial work into looking at that, and then education, advocate for programs that retrain older workers into new technologies is something that we're very passionate about, because that's the workforce, everybody that, all the young folks that you just saw here, the deputy directors, they're the future, they're the future of our region, they're the future of our education system, and in regards to the things that we need to teach them and train them on, you know, there's a direct connection to what, I was working with a business just over in Wood Village, and the exciting thing was, I was taking a tour through, it's small manufacturing over in Wood Village, and he said that, I noticed, and I reflected, I said, most of the folks that work here are fairly young, he goes, yes, actually, as a matter of fact, I get all of my workers from the Cal Center, because they have a foundry, and they teat working with your hands and manufacturing in a way that I go directly to them, and I hire my future workers right from there. So education is something that's going to be, it's very critical to the future of this region, and it's very critical to what EMI focuses on. Those are some of the things that actually guide us from a big picture, from a thirty-thousand-foot level perspective, when we start talking about what's the long-term capabilities and abilities of this region, and how we need to affect that change, and as we look at that, I just want to briefly take a, take an aside to talk about the region, you know, as, as we think about the East Metro, I think very few people outside of the East Metro begin to consider the assets that exist here. If I were to say, what part of the region has access to water and rail, as freight, and air, within twenty minutes of downtown Portland, not that that matters, but within twenty percent of downtown Portland, also has access to two major interstates, world-class recreation, once you begin to talk about the East Metro in that way, you can begin to get very excited about the opportunities and possibilities of what can go on here. As we talk about the accomplishments of what has occurred over the last five to six years, we start with Multnomah County Business Income Tax Decision Reversal, a six million dollar per year impact. East Metro Economic Alliance mobilized roughly about sixty people to travel down to Multnomah County twice in support of returning the funds that they voted to take away. We put together a subcommittee, actually, we met right here at Fairview City Hall in regards to those subcommittee meetings, and were able to pull together, again, roughly sixty people, business leaders, and elected officials, to go down to Multnomah County. One of the Multnomah County officials reflected to us and said, this is the, one of the first times that the East Metro has really come together in support of something, and we were able to get that return, now it wasn't all East Metro Economic Alliance's efforts, but East Metro Economic Alliance allowed the, was the facilitator of bringing folks together, so we had an opportunity to make an impact there. Columbia Casket River District Plan completed. If you haven't seen the Columbia Casket, Columbia Casket River District Plan, which is called the CCRD, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal development that was done by city staff and led by the elected officials, it's a tremendous plan that outlines the layout of what's going to be developed north of I-84. It's, it's got major focus for East Metro Economic Alliance, it was specifically called out in many of the plans, in the East Metro Connection Plan that was just developed, so it's something that's very critical to our current and future development. Two hundred and twenty-third expansion, of course, is something that's, again, it's near and dear to me in regards to, from a recreational side, but also from a perspective of making sure that we can move freight around this community, and ensure that we've, we've got the opportunity to bring family-based jobs to East Metro. Troutdale-Fairview Enterprise Zone Establishment, we had the opportunity to go in support of the Enterprise Zone, it was, at that point in time, it was when FedEx was actually considered coming to this area, and of course, we brought out some folks to, to work with it, work at the Troutdale City Council to ensure that Enterprise Zone was passed, and of course, we now have nine hundred additional workers that exist here in the East Metro. The Enterprise Zone Preventing Wage Issue, we want to make sure that those Enterprise Zones still, that they stay advantageous to the East Metro, almost, a lot of our economic developable lands, our industrial lands, are within Enterprise Zones, and we need to ensure that those Enterprise Zones stay conducive to economic development. East County Justice Center, that was another opportunity that we had to turn out about twenty-five to thirty people, excuse, down in Multnomah County, to be able to talk about in support of something that needs to, that needed to be done here in the East Metro. You know, you put dollars to the North-South Connector Study, it cost roughly about one point five million dollars, and that was one point five million dollars, that was up for grabs across the region, there were fifteen studies that had the opportunity to vie for this funding, fifteen studies, small studies, you know, like two oh five, and four oh five, and the ninety-nine, and twenty-six, small studies. They narrowed it down to five, and of course, you know the end of the story, so it's not like I can tell you something that you haven't, you don't already know, but they narrowed it down to five, and at the time, Metro Councilor Rex Burkholder came here to an EMI meeting, and he stood up front and he said, there are five studies still vying for that one point five million, and you're dead last. Now, normally, I don't see people pull out pitchforks, but they did this day, right before he said, but there is one thing that's more heavily weighted than anything else, he says, you're dead last in technical, but you're in, in the very first slot for community support, he says, that's weighted heavier than anything else. As you know, we got the one point five million. I was recently at another event where we were, we were talking about public and private partnerships, and how they can be effective, and I was, we were, I was specifically talking about the North-South Connector, and there was a counselor from the city of Lake Oswego, and once I got done talking, she, she turns and looks at the crowd, and she says, she's also on the panel, she says, you know what, something like this does not happen in this region, where you have four distinct communities, Multnomah County, Metro, city of Sandy gave their support, city of Damascus, she says, that doesn't happen, this is something that's incredibly unique, and we need to support this type of thing throughout the region. And as Alan Berry mentioned, the East Metro Connection Plan included an economic development plan, a business development plan that actually they paid for, that was another hundred thousand dollars added to the price tag for the benefit of the East Metro. USS Ranger, continued support for development, East Metro Economic Alliance has been, you know, at the table for a long time, working to assist in moving forward with the USS Ranger, and as everybody knows, we've, we've lost that ship, but there's other opportunities that are, that are on the table right now, and we're still working hard to ensure that we have an opportunity to look at how we develop here at the waterfront, and how we develop here in the East Metro. Recently had an opportunity, as we talk about the, you know, the benefits to each of the, each of the municipalities and regions and businesses, and I was asked by a Fairview business to say, we would like to have an opportunity to meet with the Port of Portland, because we've got some ideas, and I said, and they reached out to me, I said, for sure, no problem, I'll make sure that we have the opportunity to get you together with the right people at the port, and we did that, and during that meeting, they were able to actually look at an additional business opportunity from the port, because the port needed some, some fill, and throughout that discussion and conversation, we were able to potentially bring together a Fairview business with the Port of Portland, with the potential of having an opportunity to drive revenue for that organization. Introduced city staff of Fairview to potential project, and there was a project that came, that came up a couple of years ago, about a year and a half ago, and I was, actually it was in this room, I was giving the same presentation I just gave in regards to water and rail and all of that, and one of the individuals at that meeting called me afterwards and said, Travis, I've got a project that I want to put that person directly in touch with you on, so they called me up, and we got together, and I said, well, there's a couple of sites in the East Metro that I think you would like, and one of them is this site down by the water, they came, they loved it, they never got funding, but Erica Fitzgerald did a phenomenal job of talking to this, this group of investors, and, but, you know, we looked at a lot of different things, but again, that group never got funded, but it was an opportunity that we had to really show the East, show the region that the East Metro can shine. Outside investments in the East Metro through membership, you know, we look at the, the opportunity to gather leverage, and that's the tremendous opportunity that we have as an organization and as a region. The CCRD was funded by the state grant, that was twenty-five thousand dollars, the state also gave East Metro Economic Alliance capacity building dollars of twenty-five thousand. East Metro memberships that are outside of the East Metro region, and organizations and companies are actually contributing because they see the potential of what exists here, in between, anywhere between fifteen to twenty thousand. Metro has contributed considerably over the years, and they actually recently have become a member. We were praised for things like Measure sixty-six and sixty-seven, and our efforts as a, as a business and economic advocacy group in regards to the efforts that we had there, and on the accomplishments, I will end on a key issue that is in front of the state legislature right now, it's, the LLCs, and LLCs are limited liability companies, and they're very similar to S Corps and C Corps, although they're not corporations, they do have the limited liability protection of a corporation, as long as the LLC is running in accordance to those rules and regulations. Well, recently, there was a Fairview organization and company that actually, at the, at the state, the state Supreme Court level, was ruled against this, this company and organization, that LLCs are not protected as a sole remedy for workers' comp cases. They can actually, and technically, kind of, I don't, it's not pierced a corporate veil, but they have the opportunity to hold the owners and members liable for worker comp cases, which is a tremendous oversight in the original legislation. Many, 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 small, medium, and sometimes large businesses that exist in our communities are LLCs, and there's a, this is a gaping hole in the legislation that needs to be fixed. Our, the East Metro Economic Alliance Legislative Committee got together and had an opportunity to meet with our state legislators right before session, and was able to have the opportunity to articulate to them the challenges that this would face, the businesses would face if this was not fixed. So when we think about what we can do on a local scale, what we can do on a regional scale, we always don't think about what we can do at the state level, but this is something that affects every single LLC in the state. If you look at that legislation, it's Senate Bill six seventy-eight, the primary sponsors on that bill is Senator, our Senator Chuck Thompson, our Senator from, from Hood River, who takes in a piece of Troutdale, and then Senator Laurie Moniz Anderson, a bipartisan bill looking to affect change- A bipartisan bill looking to affect change at the state level because of what your organization, East Metro Economic Alliance, was able to do to protect the businesses in your community, and specifically a business that was the target of the Supreme Court case to begin with. The bill is currently in the House, and we see that there's, it's been unanimously passed out of committee for approval. We don't expect anything to come in front of that, and we expect it to be passed. So those are the types of things that really begin to bring changes in regards to how we affect the ability for economic development in our region. Lastly, just taking a look at the road ahead. Funding for the MCP is what we're working on, education workforce enhancements, Mount Hood Community College bonds, responding to member issues, public safety concerns, infrastructure are key things, and making sure that we stay competitive with other parts of the region. EME was first brought together for economic advocacy. Economic advocacy is something that's action, we're an action-oriented organization. We look at, how do we make sure that we ensure that this region stays conducive to economic development? Strong locally-based representation, an organization that really begins to work hard for this region. We represent this region, this subregion across the region. The executive director, that would be myself, I sit on the Work Systems Inc. Board in support of our issues regards to workforce retraining. I sit on the TriMet Board in regards to our issues and challenges that we face with transit. There was a local business, actually in city of Gresham, that had a problem with starting, they couldn't start their, this is recent, they couldn't start their shift early because they didn't have a TriMet bus coming to their location early enough. And, you know, so they, they actually were able to reach out to me, I was able to reach out to, you know, TriMet, and we have a bus that's now going to be, that's now going to be starting about a half hour early to ensure this organization, an internationally competitive global corporation, can have a shift that starts on time. Maybe they can fix that 787. Lastly, leverage the collective investment, raise the overall profile, and what I want to end on is the marketing idea of the East Metro. Up until this point in time, we've been economic advocacy focused, how do we ensure, again, that this region stays conducive to economic development, both now and in the long term. And economic development is the, is the, is the foundation for everything else we want to do, for the arts, for the parks, for all the things that we're passionate about. For education, we have to have that economic development foundation. When we were done with the MCP and we got the report back from, we got the report back from Dave Leland, it was clear that what we were lacking was a strong marketing focus. The board, under all of its, you know, with all of its leadership, the board actually called out in our business plan now, a new marketing section that historically has not been there. It's a new focus, it's something that, as we see the collective, the collective view looking from anywhere else in the region, nationally and internationally, what does the East Metro look like? And that's something that we need to define, it's something that we need to all be on the same page about in regards to, as we move forward, how do we best represent these communities in their uniqueness and their, and the things that they can, the things that they can provide to future families and also future businesses that want to and will locate in our region.
Any questions, comments? Yes. Counselor Arnold.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. As far as the representation from businesses in Fairview, I mean, do you feel like Fairview is well-represented on EME?
Is, we've, well, we've got, I mean, Nacco Materials Handling has been a long-term member, one of the original members, and so, you know, we've got that representation. We've had Navistar that has been a long-term member, and Navistar actually wasn't able to get their budget approved for membership this year, but clearly, they've said, "Yeah, please get back to us in the fall because we see the value, we want to be a part of this effort." And, I mean, to answer the short question, I mean, to answer the question with a short answer, I'd say we could use more representation from Fairview. I mean, we've got, we've got, we've historically had folks like Bumpers that have been a part of East Metro Economic Alliance, and, you know, they're supportive and they've come back because they've seen, you know, a lot of positive changes to what's going on.
I mean, do you feel like, has it stayed relatively static over the life of EME or has it kind of come and gone?
It's, it's stayed relatively static. It's kind of, you know, pretty much, it kind of has stayed flat. You know, you know, I get asked, you know, the question of where do I spend the most of my time? It's actually fascinating. Over the years, the two communities that I spend the majority of my time in are Fairview and Wood Village. You know, Fairview from a perspective of helping and assisting, you know, businesses with, with making connections and networking throughout the region, any, you know, issues and challenges that come up, mostly region-wide. You know, how do we get those businesses connected, and what are some challenges that we, that we can help them with? Wood Village, kind of the same thing. How do we help with situations in regards to economic development and potential recruitment and those types of things?
Okay. Then it always becomes something about money. What, if anything, are we contributing to EME today from a dollar standpoint?
For the current fiscal year, it was $3,000. For next budget year, I believe it was $2,000. In the proposed budget that will be before you this evening is a $2,000.
That's all I have. Hey, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good update.
Yeah, Travis, question. How many members of the board have businesses that are not in the city of Gresham?
That's a great question in regards to numbers. Just off the top of my head, I don't have a specific number, but I can tell you that we've got representation from almost every city on the board.
Well, other than electors, last time I heard, there weren't any members of the board that didn't have businesses outside of Gresham, so.
Um.
Which is interesting.
I mean, I, there are actually quite a few board members that have, that have interests outside of Gresham. I mean, I can get that, I can easily get that, that perspective to, you know, to the council. I mean, that's not something that I had prepared right here in this presentation, but I am happy to share that.
Well, I'm talking about just people voting members of the board who have businesses outside of Gresham, so it'd be good to have businesses outside of Gresham because I know that they're, they exist.
Well, that's a great question. I mean, that's a great comment. I mean, we've, so historically, Dave Ernest from Nacco Materials Handling has been a board member, Dean Herford, who I believe is here tonight, he's also been a board member, and Jeff Anderson has been a board member. Actually, Jeff Anderson was a board member up until 2012. So we consistently, for the, for the course of, I would probably say, EME's existence up until now, this is probably the only time that we don't have a board representative from Fairview.
Okay. Well, thank you.
We would love to.
Thank you.
And there's, and to answer that question, there's actually, there's actually been a focus to say that they're, they're, they're looking at, the exact committee said that there should be a designated private sector spot for each of the cities, just like there's a designated public sector spot for each of the cities.
Good.
And I think there's, there's resounding board approval and support for that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and, by the way, as a board member, maybe you would inquire, because I, since I've been mayor, we're trying to look at potential transportation north of the river of Sandy, excuse me, north of Sandy Boulevard, and there've been two pseudo-studies, but there's been a real lack of interest. I know that, for instance, that Dave Ernest has expressed to me and to others the fact that many of his workers, and he's the only one that has, I've talked to, but he brought it up, that they like to have mass transit out there, but no one's ever looked at it, really.
I would be happy to make sure that you get, you know, the information back, a response back, or, you know, reason why we're not, we're not able to move there, or if we, if we are, then what's that timeline? So I will.
Good, good.
I will carry the water on that one.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay, the next item is the MHRC Budget Description, and, yes, hello.
Mayor, we have, we have Mary Beth, and I'm sorry, Mayor Beth, I'm spacing on the last name.
I'm Mary Beth Henry. I'm the Staff Director for the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission, and the first thing I want to do is thank the council for appointing Rich Goheen as your representative. He has been an incredible asset to the commission, and we always seek his wise counsel when facing challenging issues. He was unable to be here tonight, so I'm here instead. So I'll review, you've already had kind of a long evening, I'll review the budget quickly and then be happy to answer any questions that you might have. As you know, the commission is an intergovernmental partnership among Gresham, Fairview, Portland, Troutdale, Wood Village, and Multnomah County, and the commission has oversight and enforcement and public benefit responsibilities for the cable services franchises. And for Fairview, you have two cable services franchises, Comcast and Frontier. Over the past year, the commission has provided many services to our communities, and I'd like to highlight a few. We have funded community grants totaling over $1.3 million for local schools, libraries, nonprofits, and local governments to use technology to support local public services. And there are descriptions of the 2012 grants in your budget as part of your packet. The community access channels will be provided in high-definition formats starting in late June, and Rob Brady is here if you have any questions on that. Metro East Government Affairs Channel, where your council meetings are carried, will be one of the first in the country for city councils to be carried in high definition. So very excited.
Why don't you dress better for that?
It's funny you should say that. At last night's meeting at Gresham, there was a question about whether there needed to be some different makeup. But it is really exciting, and it's really a model for government, community media around the rest of the country, that we're going to be the first to go high definition. The commission has also coordinated a major upgrade to the institutional network, and that's basically the network that provides low-cost service to all the schools and libraries and many of the local governments. The commission focuses its resources on two priorities. The core responsibility of franchise management and consumer protection, yes, we do continue to receive complaints, and we manage the franchise public benefit resources to positively impact our communities. One of the major work items for the coming fiscal year is a comprehensive redesign of the community grant program. We want to be more strategic, and the commission would like to, since this is a 10-year agreement and we have significant dollars for, approximately $4.7 million annually, we want to be able to look back after 10 years and say, "We set out to accomplish this and we achieved this." And so we're really stepping back and trying to look at how we can be more strategic with that investment. In terms of actual, the actual budget, Fairview will receive about $35,000 from cable franchise fees after disbursement of funds to Metro East Community Media and to the MHRC operating budget. The contribution to the operating budget is approximately $10,000. And all of the specifics are outlined in detail in your budget, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone? Yes, Counselor Arnold.
Yes, just a couple of questions. Was wondering if you had any insight being advocates for our community with regard to à la carte pricing? Is there any movement on that?
Well, about a couple of weeks ago, there was a hearing before the Senate Commerce Committee in Washington, DC, and Senator John McCain actually testified, and he has proposed a bill that would allow à la carte services to be offered to consumers. But in the same hearing, we heard from, and it was webcast, so I could hear it back here, we heard from executives at Comcast and Time Warner who indicated that even in a à la carte world, that the prices would, that consumers would not experience a reduction in prices. I mean, that's what those representatives of those companies said. At this point in time, what I'm hearing is that there is not a lot of support for Senator McCain's bill, but it isn't dead. It's actually been introduced, and I would be happy to get you the bill number if you are interested.
And then my next question is more on a personal level. So we purchased a nice, high-definition television with the intention of being able to run through all the channels, and, oh, I guess it was probably, what, maybe four months ago, that all of a sudden it stopped working, and so then, my understanding is that we need a box of some sort in order to get all of our television channels back, the Discovery Channel and other types of channels like that. Why is it, why is that?
Well, it may depend on what level of service you're purchasing, if Comcast is your provider, but I would be happy to follow up. That was, it was a digital transition that Comcast instituted, and I think it's important to keep in mind that we will be as aggressive as we can in our role in protecting our consumers, but we are preempted and have limited tools in some areas. And this is one area where the company is allowed to deliver the services in that way, and we have no regulatory authority over rates or, you know, whether a box is or is not needed. What we did when we began to receiving complaints is work with Comcast, in this case, some of the complaints that we had received, to furnish a box at no cost to consumers. So I would be happy, Counselor Arnold, to follow up with you if that's something that you are interested in.
It is, it just seems, it seems like in our high-technology age, we should be getting less, not more. You know, we got rid of our boxes and now they're back again. So speaking of Senator McCain's legislation, he, I think in that he also said that, generally speaking, that from '95 to 2010, that cable has increased on average about 6.1% higher than inflation. Do you have any specifics in our region?
We track the national model, so ours has gone up that much as well, and that was part of the hearing, at the Senate hearing, and what the companies said was that the cost of programming is driving the price increases. So for example, here in Fairview, we're projecting for franchise fees that will be flat, and it's because there's going to be a slight drop in Frontier, but a slight increase in Comcast. We're not seeing lots of new subscribers, but we're seeing rate increases, and that's the only reason that franchise fees are growing at all, and the companies are saying that it's the cost of programming that's driving those rate increases. And again, as I indicated earlier, Congress preempted local governments from regulating rates some years ago.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mary Beth. Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Counselor Crimby.
It looks like we're supposed to approve something here, so I guess if there's no objection, I would move to approve the Mount Hood Regulatory Commission's 2013-14 proposed budget.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? I was in favor of seeing the five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is FYI 2013-2014 Budget Adoption Resolution 27-2013.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you is the Budget Committee-approved budget for fiscal year 2013-14. The city budget, as approved by the Budget Committee, has a total budget of $18.6 million. If you have any, there's several details we put in there, all of you are part of that committee as well, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. to entertain them.
Yes, Councilor Crimby.
I just have one. We have the council goal to make a determination on how we're going to handle budget surplus and how much should be in contingency funds versus rollover in the general fund. And maybe it's not physically possible for us to get that figured out, but here we are passing a budget without having discussed or done anything on this council goal of figuring out how much we want to have in reserves versus contingency. I don't know if that's anything that anybody wants to address before we pass this budget or not, but it's, I mean, I'd hate to see us slip by another year without figuring this out when it is a council goal.
Any comments? I think we're going to have to follow up on that. Okay.
Actually, may I have one comment or question on that? We've had discussion on that in the budget meeting, Samantha, and I can't remember, but what, what is the, or what was the acceptable level of, of, you know, reserves or ending fund balance? Was it, was it three months or six months?
We, when we had the original fund balance policy discussion about a year ago, the intent at that time was always to keep at minimum six months' worth of operating expenditures for the general fund in the ending fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, any other questions? At that, I will open this up, the public hearing, to see if anyone has any comments to make for this, against this, or any regarding the budget, proposed budget. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, motion to approve Resolution 27-2013.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Ed, any discussion? Councilor Crimby.
Just one. Samantha, is it possible to put a timeline on when we can have a workshop or whatever it is that we need to do to figure out this council goal of reserves, fund, end, end fund, end fund balance rollover versus whatever else?
Yes, I already have the original drafted policy that we talked about from a long time ago, so I have it tentatively on the work session for the meeting in July, which I believe is July, that second, that second Wednesday in July. I have it scheduled at that time.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All right. So as, all those in favor, did we vote on that already? No, let's vote on that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is passed unanimously. Oh, this must be getting late. Okay. qualified to receive state funds. Samantha's.
As we talked about at the Budget Committee meetings as well, the city does receive state shared revenues from the state. As part of that, there are two separate resolutions that the council needs to pass. First, you must pass a resolution that states we qualify for state shared revenues. You must also pass a resolution stating the city's intent and desire to receive state shared revenues as well. So the first Resolution 28-2013 is to certify the eligibility of the city of Fairview to receive state shared revenues because we do provide these services listed under ORS 2217.760.
Anybody here a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 28-2013.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is passed unanimously. And next is Resolution 29-2013, and it has to do with the election to receive state shared funds.
Yes, and we must have a public hearing portion of this as well, Mayor.
All right. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 29-2013.
A second?
Second.
All right, public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak for, against, or about this, please step forward. Seeing none, the end of the public hearing. All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is passed unanimously. We really move forward quickly on those, don't we? Next is the infamous Sign Code Amendment, Ordinance 2-2013. First reading and staff report, so let's try and do this smoothly.
I'm actually going to be discussing the sign code with you this evening.
Do you want me to do the first reading? An ordinance of the City Council, the city of Fairview, in Fairview, Oregon, amending Fairview Municipal Code, Chapter 19.170, Sign Regulations Eliminating Content-Based Code Language.
Okay, staff, report.
I'm just going to give you a quick overview of it. Basically, Lindsay Nesbit and Paul Eldner from our office have been working on the sign code review. And it was basically stemmed out of some concern that Paul had because there were some content-based restrictions in your sign code. It was basically under state law, basically the Oregon Constitution. In any form of expression, you want to remain completely content-neutral. So all of the changes, we're basically going through and making sure that all the sign code regulations were basically related to, you know, the size of the sign, you know, how big they were, where they can be placed, the time that, you know, if you have a temporary sign, the amount of time you can have the sign up, and basically taking out all references to the actual content of the sign. So that was the primary purpose of these amendments, the sign codes.
Question I have is, with all the fun we had before with the sign issue, is it how come we never heard of this before? Did this just pop up?
No, it didn't. It just popped up. It's, you know, it's a continuing issue that there's, you know, always new cases coming out concerning sign codes. So I believe in 2011, you were making some changes to like spanner signs, and that was initially when Paul had brought this to the city's intention, just wanting to do a more comprehensive content-based review of your code. And, you know, it just took some time for that to happen, so I think that was sort of the impetus behind it, but.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Councilor Crimby.
I've just got a couple. One of them just appears to be an oversight on page eight of 36 in the Ordinance 2-2013. About just below halfway down the page, a sentence that starts out painted wall decoration means displays painted directly on a wall and are designed and intended as, and it used to say
Decorative.
A decorative or ornamental feature. And with the word "feature" dropped off, it appeared to me that the word or letter "A" at the end of the above sentence needed to be striked out as well. Painted wall decoration means display
Paint.
Painted directly on a wall and are designed and intended as decorative or ornamental. The word "A" didn't seem to fit anymore. I just thought that was an oversight. So the other two, I think, are a little more important. Page 17, under Section 19.170.070, hardship relief. And Section A says hardship relief may be requested from a planning commission for all sign regulations except prohibited signs. And then, under Section C, line one, is some similar language. A variance for sign regulations for underlying zone may be requested from the planning commission for temporary alternatives, et cetera. It seems to me it's almost something similar to what we discussed in the work session where we're giving a director or staff some authority to take care of issues that we don't need to come to council. Is this something that we really need to wait to go to a planning commission for? Could this be handled at a staff level? And my concern is that quite frequently, planning commission doesn't always meet and there's been some times lately where I think they've missed quite a few meetings. And so if it's a temporary hardship and they were talking about construction, the base, the background information on this is if there's a street closure or something going on for construction, they want to put a, their business sign, a temporary one out at the end of the construction so people can see that they're still open for business. And if a planning commission misses three or four meetings, this construction's going to be long done and this person has lost their business because they couldn't put a temporary sign out because they had to wait for the planning commission to meet and they don't meet. So wouldn't that make sense to put language in there for staff to be able to handle that? It could, it could be dealt with immediately instead of having to wait a month or two for a planning commission to meet.
That's something you can certainly consider. I mean, it appear they were just making
If, yeah, if there's no legal reason for it to go to planning commission, I would suggest that we change that language to, to let staff deal with that because it would seem to be much more expedient, whereas leaving it with planning commission could be an utter failure and they never get it done before the temporary hardship is passed.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's absolutely reasonable. I just think unfortunately, somebody needs to say what you just said.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I think we can approve it with the modifications.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
And I don't have the exact language for you right now.
Okay, let's see. Um, okay, I would
But, but what I can do is, so you have to come back for a second reading again. When you come back for the second reading, we'll have the sort of revised language and it'll just be amended, so.
Should we do what we do tonight for the first section where, approve it with, when we vote? Do we need a new motion tonight to approve the first reading with this modification?
You, I don't, you don't need to, you don't have to approve the first reading. First reading is just the first reading. So the only actual approval that needs to happen is after, you know, during
Public hearing. Okay, so we can come back to our next reading and the language will be
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. I like that. We don't have to do
Absolutely. Good common sense comment. Yes, great, great. Okay, anything else? Okay. Until the next meeting, we will do part two. Now, the next part is this is facility use and this is Resolution 30-2013. Sam?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is Resolution 30-2013. This is the, as you know, council's been working closely with staff to try and draft some type of a policy that we can use at a staff level for fee waivers and those kind of things for the use of city facilities and city buildings. That includes community center as well as the heslin rooms, council chambers, those kind of areas. We tried to incorporate all of the suggestions and concerns and policies of the council as we drafted this policy. We wanted to, heard very clearly, we wanted to encourage our citizen, our senior citizen groups as well as our youth membership groups, especially some of them that may have limited resources, all while balancing the use of the community center for other groups that would be paying members in, to, you know, maintain the building and keep its upkeep at a reasonable level, but also make sure the community center's not intended to be a revenue stream. It is simply tended to be maintained and serve our community and our citizens in a positive way. So hopefully this meets the, incorporates the suggestions and things that the council shared and this is before you for consideration.
Okay. Councilor Crimby.
Just a couple. I noticed on the list of city facilities, Park Overlook Room, is that a room that we don't generally
I'm sorry, which room?
The Park Overlook?
The Park View? We do not generally rent that room out because that room is accessible to city staff offices.
Okay.
So we do not.
I figured that was the answer, but I just wanted to double check. Then, I know we, we touched on this very lightly and didn't really discuss it when we were going over this in the workshop
Sure.
A month or so ago, the not eligible for facility use waivers list.
Mm-hmm.
not saying that political parties or lobby groups couldn't be 501(c)(3)'s, I don't know, maybe they are, maybe they aren't, but it almost looked to me like the third-line item of religious groups, which, as far as I know, a lot of them are 501(c)(3)'s. It just seemed like it was perhaps the only 501(c)(3) group that we were saying, "No, you don't, you don't, you're not eligible for a fee waiver." I didn't know what anybody else thought about that, but it seemed like they meet the same criteria as everybody else, including 501(c)(3), which a lot of the other organizations that are getting fee waivers may not have. If they meet the other criteria, it seemed to me like maybe we were picking on them and they were a 501(c)(3). That's the only other comment I have.
Okay, Councilor Arnold.
Yeah, just a few questions. So the first one is under Policy General Principles, the last bullet. $5 cleaning fee will be applied per hour of use for groups larger than 25 and will not be waived. Are we talking about, I just want to make sure I understand, is this for fee waived only?
That would be for, so if you look at Table A, that would be for the groups, that would be on the front side. So it would be those, let's say we had a, for example, Reynolds School District is a 501(c)(3) and they, their leadership team meets in our facility. So they meet the criteria of the 501(c)(3), but they frequently have groups that are larger than 25 in the facility. So they would not be charged a waiver, but they would be charged the, the cleaning fee for their group. But on the backside of Table A, there is a youth-based and senior, senior citizen-based fee structure, which actually, that one, we tried to make that a larger group for those and not make them subject to a fee waiver unless they had a significant number of people in the building.
I just wanted to ensure that this does not apply to the folks that are paying the full $150 to use, that they don't get charged on top of that a $5 per hour fee for using the facility. Is that correct?
Right.
Thank you. My next question has to do with Table A, fees for use of the facility. I would like to suggest that if, in the event that there's nothing booked on a weekend or, and/or change this and put in parentheses, "If not already booked," that instead of doing $100 for a weekend half-day, that we charge per hour versus half, a half of a day at $100. I'm sure that there are folks out there that have a birthday party that only lasts an hour or two, but then have to be charged $100 for a birthday party.
So incorporate it per hour rate.
A per hour rate. And then on the back page, Table B. I was a little confused. So it says $25 refundable key deposit, non-refundable room use rental, and then it has fees, but aren't these the fee waived? So why is there a scale for fees?
There would be a scale only if they, because they would have to apply for the waiver if they wanted the waiver. So if, you know, the, the question becomes for, so a nonprofit youth-based organization, absolutely, these would be, this is the value of the fees that would be waived for those groups who request it. So it's just to associate the value with, with what's being waived.
All right. It's, it's a little confusing.
Okay.
And then the other piece of that is, I noticed now that we have restrictions on when the facility can be used.
Only, one of the questions, comments that was raised by council in, when the meetings was a concern about high use meetings was a concern about high usage and some of our groups who are paying customers versus some of our groups who are routine users and have fees waived on a routine basis. So one of the proposals that we're making is that during, only during the, and I talked with Devry about this extensively, when is our kind of peak season? When is the community center in high demand by a variety of our citizens in our community? And it's in the most demand in June, July, and August. That's when people want weddings, they have a Friday night wedding, they have a Saturday wedding, they have birthday parties, you know, a multitude of events. But they typically peak during June, July, and August. So in order to ensure that those folks had access, equal access, we limited during that peak season, the youth and senior group fee, you know, those annual groups, to not be able to use the facility on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, unless it's open, if there's an exception, absolutely. But as a rule, just having them move the meeting to Monday through Thursday during that peak season, just to make sure we had open access to everybody. Whereas during the other season, the other season, September through May, those groups could meet any time of the week. It would be Sunday through Saturday, completely available, doesn't matter for any of those reoccurring. So we were just trying to meet the comment at the council to balance those groups.
So my recommendation would be to add language behind it that says, "may use as That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Okay.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yes, Counselor.
So are we saying that each of our facilities are equal value and equal rent? Is that what you believe? The community center, city hall, and the heslin, or, yeah, heslin room, are they all of equal value, as we believe?
Devry? We charge the same.
We have the same fee structure?
Same rental fee.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Fee structure's the same if you're using city hall or if you're using community center.
I guess that's the simplest way to do it, but is that reasonable, that city hall isn't more valuable, or the community center isn't more valuable? I don't know. I'm just, just a question here.
I think our overall policy wasn't so much of what is the room worth, or what would it cost to replace the room? It's, we're trying to make things affordable, but we want to cover staff costs. And basically, the staff cost to go and open up the heslin house, or open up the community center, or to stay here and lock up, it's pretty much the same cost to the city. And so we wanted to recover our costs, no matter what, on the majority of this stuff. So that's probably why it's.
Yeah, that's my understanding of how the original fee.
We're talking about the heslin room, not the heslin house, right? Because you'll have the heslin house people down here.
Yeah.
You don't want to do that.
And typically, the groups who utilize city hall are the 501(c)(3) or our business partners, or, you know, something of that nature. The other, you know, it's the other youth groups and those kind of things who utilize the community center. The only youth group that we have that uses council, is a peer group. The peer court uses council chambers on a regular basis as well.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion?
Well, I think, maybe Counselor Arnold should make the motion. Might make it easier.
All right. Move to approve Facility Use Rental Policy Resolution 30-2013 with the following amendments. Let's see if I can find them. To amend Table A, fee for use of city facilities, weekends being charged an hourly rate. Table B, waiver availability, June through August, Monday through Thursday, use permitted as available.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is passed unanimously. Now, next.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.